Welcome. My name is Linda McMichael. It's my pleasure to be here with Margaret Swick to this forum. Right at the moment, we're going to do the city council. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experience aimed to assist the newly enfranchised women voters. Oh, thank you. Fast forward 102 years later, we are still mighty. We are still political, but never partisan, but we are no longer an experiment. We work very hard to empower voters and defend democracy, and it is in that vein that we host our candidates for city council tonight, and thank you for coming. Our local Butte County League is very, very passionate about voter education, and that is why we host these forums. The questions were compiled by league members and the public, such as yourself, and the order in which the candidates will answer was predetermined by random selection. We respectfully request that you, the audience, refrain from any display of support or opposition to the candidates or question topics, and please hold your applause until the end, as well as silence your devices. The forum will be posted on the League of Women Voters website in a few days, so please check that out. Also, all questions will be directed to all candidates. And it is my pleasure to introduce Margaret Swick, longtime member and former president.
Thank you, Linda. We're going to move right to our questions and move along at a good clip so the audience knows each of your platforms. So, the first question, and I will be asking it to Mr. Winslow. Measure H will establish a 1% sales tax increase in Chico. Please explain your position on this ballot measure.
Sales taxes are regressive. Low-income people pay more of their income in a sales tax because they have left to spend, simply so, so it adds up more. However, the city of Chico has very great needs, and I'm running to win on a platform of improving neighborhoods, so I do support the tax. I think it will be better for even the low-income communities in Chico if the tax passes.
Thank you. Ms. Navas?
Sorry, could you repeat? I thought you were doing the intros.
Yes. Measure H, oh, I apologize. I was rushing it along. Let me stop right there, and we have one minute, each of us, to introduce ourselves. So, we'll go back to Mr. Winslow, and go ahead.
My name is Addison Winslow. I'm running for city council because, like everybody, I watched the impact of the campfire come down squarely on the backs of the poor. Now, I've been to city council and city council chambers, pushing for relief for tenants, for safe places for the unhoused, and for better housing policies, and I've found a city council consistently disinterested, even disdainful of these ideas. I'm promoting a community development platform that's in line with the goals of our general plan. They can help bring us back on track. We can have more housing at lower cost to both residents and the city while preserving our natural surroundings, our green line and our fire break. In doing so, we can enrich neighborhoods, create walkable communities where currently people depend on cars. With policies and commitment, we can bring back an electric streetcar system, and that's what the future of a successful city looks like, so please help me, help us get there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And since I have made a couple errors already, I'm going to go to our format here, and my next person I'm asking is Ms. McDaniel.
Hi, thank you. My name's Monica McDaniel. I've lived in Chico for almost 30 years. I went to college here. I've raised two kids here. I've worked with for-profit businesses and nonprofit businesses. I have been a civil servant for the city of Chico for the last 13 years. I've served five terms on one of the boards and commissions. During that time, I've learned how the city works. I've learned to manage budgets. I have learned to enact bipartisan policy, and I've really loved serving the city, and so that's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett.
My name is Dale Bennett. I'm a native of Chico, was born here, attended Notre Dame, Pleasant Valley, Chico State, have a degree in psychology. And this is going to go really fast, so I'm going to speed it up. I've been on the planning commission. I have been on the architecture review and historic preservation board. I am currently a city councillor, appointed city councillor. I have also been on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the board for the DCBA Downtown Chico Business Association. I've been on the board for the Chico History Museum, and I know Chico. I know Chico very well. I've been here for a very long time, although I did spend a short time out in Kansas City. Fortunately, I was able to come back. So, I have an abundance of common sense. I have an abundance of experience, and I think experience is a huge indicator.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Reynolds?
Hi, my name is Casey Reynolds. I'm currently vice mayor of the city of Chico. I have served on the city council for four years. I've raised my family here in Chico, went to Neil Dow, Chico Junior, Chico, hi. I am raising my kids and grandkids here, and I am running because I want to keep Chico, as our mantra is, "A safe place to raise a family, an ideal place to run a business, and a great place to live and excel in your community." So, I look forward to hopefully serving for another four years. Thank you. Thank you.
Morgan Kennedy?
Hi, my name is Morgan Kennedy, and I'm running in District 2, the same as Mrs. Reynolds. I was born in Chico. I was raised on the ridge of paradise and then returned to Chico as a young adult. My career background is mostly in the medical field, my last position being in reproductive health at Planned Parenthood. And currently, I am a business owner that deals with a subsection of industrial real estate in California, Nevada, and Arizona. So, I have a pretty diverse background. I am running for city council because I feel like I owe Chico a huge debt. I have gotten a lot of opportunities here. I've been able to raise my family here, get married here, have a great life here, and I see those opportunities disappearing for people, and I want to step in and make those opportunities available for everyone again.
Thank you. Mr. Van Overbeek?
Good evening. My name is Tom Van Overbeck. I'm running for council in District 6, which is on the eastern side of town. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight, and I also want to thank the league for putting this on. My mother was very active in the league, and she would be very pleased that I'm here. I've been ringing doorbells in my district, and people feel a palpable sense of loss and the decline of the quality of civic life in Chico, and I'm running to restore our quality of civic life. We can fix it. The decline in the squalor and chaos is not inevitable. Other cities have done it. I'm a problem solver. I'm a consensus builder, not a bomb-thrower, and I think you can tell by the color of my hair I have a lot of experience like Dale. I don't care about ideology. I care about making Chico a better place to live.
Thank you. Ms. Gianola?
Hi, my name is Jessica Gianola, and I'm also running for District 6. District 6 is large and sprawling. It is also known as the Fire District, and we have developments such as the Valley's Edge that have high concern for myself and my neighbors and the increased fire risks that come with it. I moved to Chico about 18 years ago as a Chico State student. My degree is in public health education, a minor in health and community services, and community health and safety is something that I'm about. I work as a housing case manager with campfire survivors, and I know firsthand the barriers that people face in obtaining affordable housing, and I'd like to see an increase in affordable housing and reduce barriers so that we can get people out of our parks and into homes. Thank you.
Ms. Winslow, do you feel that you gave your opening statement? You're good. And Ms. Navas, I know you're next.
Yeah.
Okay. And Ms. Navas?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Navas, and I'm running for city council in District 4. Happy to be here, thank you. And I arrived in Chico in 1976 in an old VW Pop-Top bus, and ironically enough, rolled into camp in Bidwell Park, and my parents didn't know that wasn't cool, so we had to roll back out again. And I have been here ever since, except for a brief break for a little bit of college. I have a business management degree. I've worked for 24 years for Butte County in social services. I also have six years of housing experience with low-income housing as well. And what would I like to do is bring my experience, my rapport with a lot of the city department heads, county department heads, and others to get some collaboration going, get some validation of the community, bring us together so that we can get our quality of life in Chico rolling again. I've attended city council for five years, advocate, I read everything. I love to work hard for people, and I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to our first question, which was, "Measure H will establish a 1% sales tax increase in Chico. Please explain your position on this ballot measure." Ms. Navas?
All right, thank you. Well, hopefully, people understand that of the existing sales tax, only 0.95% go to the city of Chico of that amount that we take in of the 7.5. So, we have roads right now that are in extremely poor condition. We basically have a 46 PCI rating, and that basically means our pavement index. And so, we have a big lift to do, right? So, you've got to do some pros, cons, return on investment. I'm into looking at facts and analyzing them to see what's best. I'm certainly not a fan of being taxed to death, but I don't see a way out for the city unless we do get behind this tax, and I feel it is doable. I'd like to see, I wish there would have been a sunset clause, and I wish it could have been dedicated to public infrastructure. It isn't. So, we need to really look to ourselves and look to our community, and Public Works is really doing a heavy lift and doing what they can for Chico. I believe we really need to get in there and help them out. So, thank you.
Ms. Gianola?
Thank you. On Measure H, actually, I had mixed feelings myself on increasing our taxes in our area as we're in a hard time right now, and any increased payments out are difficult for people to pay. However, the city is in need. We have a lot of areas that have not been addressed because of financial reasons, and the only pause that I have are going to be similar to what Ms. Navas' are, is there are no dedicated spots for it to go, and there is no sunset. And I do have pause for how current leadership may use this money if it is not dedicated, and it should go to areas like the roads, the parks, assisting our city employees with proper wages, livable wages, so they can live in Chico. So, there are many pluses to it, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van Overbeek?
Chico has, I'm in favor of Measure H. Chico has a structural revenue problem. We cannot fix the things that need to be fixed in this community to improve our quality of life if we don't have additional source of revenue, and the sales tax looks like the only one that is viable at the moment. So, for example, we need to spend $9 million a year to keep our roads at the current, the pavement quality index of 46. The city's only spending three, so that's a $6 million deficit. We have one of the lowest numbers of police per capita in the state. We only have one per thousand. We have a third fewer firefighters than we had 15 years ago, even though we have 15,000 more people. The park, which is one of the defining characteristics of Chico, needs tremendous attention. So, I urge you to support Measure H.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yeah, so, sales taxes are not normally something that I would be on board with, but after sitting through four years of budget sessions and also negotiations for contracts in closed session and seeing how well our city has done and our council has done in continuing to have a balanced budget, to not be in the red, to be in the black, and when we are doing negotiations, employees are picking up more and more of their principal pensions, so I don't have the fear that I would have used to have that, "Oh, it's all going to go to PERS, and it's never going to get to the roads and the parks and the wonderful things that we want it to go to." So, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that has happened, or that has not happened because we were $14 million in debt eight, 10 years ago. So, we definitely need to get that put on roads and...
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy?
I would much prefer to support a bond measure over Measure H. That way, those funds would be allocated to things like roads and maintenance of the park, city employees' wages, particularly the public works department, their lower rung employees need to be paid better. However, I do not trust our current council to manage unlimited funds with no end date properly. I think we've seen a lot of financial mismanagement in the recent past, and I do not support Measure H.
Mr. Bennett?
I made the decision to vote in favor of putting Measure H before the people. It hasn't been done in the past. It should have been done years ago, most likely. So, I'm in favor of it because we don't have an alternative. Whether you're on one side of the aisle or the other, it doesn't matter. We don't have enough money in the city of Chico to fix our roads. We don't have enough money for sewer repairs, and we've got 30% of our sewer system, which is long past its life expectancy. Think about that. Think about what would happen if we lost the sewer system, a large portion of the sewer system. I don't think you want that. Potholes are serious. Sewers are very, very serious, and I'm just going to impress upon you, you need to vote yes. Please.
Thank you. Ms. McDaniel?
I'm in favor of Measure H. In recent years, the city was on the verge of bankruptcy. A lot of hard cuts had to be made during that time. The city's budget has rebounded from that somewhat. We're in the black, but we still need to do things like support our infrastructure. We need to rebuild our urban forester. We need to take care of our city. We need to support our police department, our fire department. The fire department needs another department north of town, and so we need money to build that. Also, Chico is a big place for tourism. A lot of tourists come to Chico. They use our roads, they use our infrastructure, and we need to have them help pay their fair share for coming to our town to support the local citizens. So, yes, I'm in favor of Measure H.
Thank you. Next question. What will you do to ensure that downtown Chico thrives and meets the current and future needs of Chico? Mr. Van Overbeek?
So, I am a, that is a great question. Downtowns are what define cities. So, wherever you go in the country, there are strip malls that always sell the same stuff, same stores selling the same things. The downtowns are what make a city unique and create a sense of place, and we have a particularly interesting downtown because it's historic and it's also close to the university. The biggest problem we've seen has been caused by homeless people camped in the plaza and across from the city council chambers. I know of at least two situations where leases, commercial leases, have been, people who'd committed verbally backed out because they came to town and saw the campers in the plaza and said, "If you can't run your city better than this, we don't want to play." The current city council's done a great job of moving people out of the downtown, so it's a much better place. There's a lot of work to do.
Ms. Gianola?
Thank you. For downtown, I see downtown is full of small business owners when I think of downtown, and I would like to see for our future, maintain a good relationship with our small business owners and seeing what their needs are, if we have any areas in the city that can help make their business a little safer, better, easier for them to succeed at continuing to run their business and support their families. Part of the issue that we're seeing in downtown is going to be, people need to feel safe downtown, and with safety, that's going to be policy, and policy is going to come back to, in my opinion, is going to be housing, and if we have enough housing for the people in our area, we're less likely to see them in public spaces in our parks, and that is an area that I see connected to many concerns that our city has, and those are strong efforts that I will have.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, I think in the time that I've been alive, and I hope you can tell that I'm not that elderly, downtown Chico has gone through several iterations. It's like we can't make up our mind about what it's supposed to look like. I really think we need to look more into historical preservation. I also think we need to loosen parking requirements for businesses or hotels or things like that that want to become part of downtown Chico. I think the restrictions are really tight right now and basically make it impossible for those businesses to thrive. I think that we have an opportunity to really capitalize on the uniqueness of our downtown by making it more walk and bike friendly as opposed to just a drive-through. I feel like that's really taking away from how special downtown is.
Ms. Reynolds?
So, yeah, downtown, ensure that we have a great amount of parking because you can't get to the businesses, you can't parking. Clean up the parklets. We've got a great plan hopefully moving forward that I would love to continue the parklets. I actually really like them. I think people really enjoy dining outside, but let's make them uniform, let's make them pretty, let's make them consistent and in a reasonable amount of space where we're not taking up a bunch of parking spaces. Hold our landlords accountable and ensure that they're keeping their businesses clean and nice and doing everything that they need to do. Keep our amazing farmer's market down there. I love having the farmer's market and to be able to go get my tamales and flowers and all the good things on Sunday, Saturday mornings. And to make sure that we're catering not only to college students but to families. We want to make it a safe place for the students to walk down and enjoy, and families as well.
Ms. McDaniel?
Downtown is one of the best parts of Chico, and the small businesses that grow and thrive there are important and part of what makes the downtown special. So, I would be in support of the businesses. I love the idea of furthering the parklets. Downtown businesses have been trying to get outdoor seating for a long time. COVID has allowed for that, and I think developing that, I think more bringing people downtown and making them feel safe. A lot of people in recent years have said that they didn't feel safe going downtown and didn't feel safe going to the park, and so making people feel safe and welcome fills the community with things for people to do and things for people to enjoy. I like the idea of making downtown more walk and bike friendly, and we need to be nourishing downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Could you please repeat the question?
What will you do to ensure that downtown Chico thrives and meets the current and future needs of Chico?
Downtown Chico is a complex situation. It is private property, so for one, for someone to believe that there are measures that could be taken to change the private property structure, I don't think that's going to happen. Tomorrow morning, we will be meeting down at the city to discuss some financial assistance for the DCBA Downtown Chico Business Association. I am on the finance committee. I've been on the DCBA board for years. I'm not right now, but in the past for years, so I know exactly what the dynamics are of downtown Chico and the businesses. It's tough. COVID really threw a huge wrench into the situation. They are still in a recovery mode. That's going to continue for a while, so I think we all need to shop downtown Chico. If you want to support downtown Chico, if you like downtown Chico, shop downtown.
Ms. Navas?
Yeah, so, I'm a fan of crowdsourcing. I want to lean into the community experts and discuss with them what they would like to see for the future of downtown. I think we're on a great trajectory. I think the DCBA and others do a fantastic job. What I do notice is there's a little bit of blight here and there when we get vacancies down there. I'd like to see us tighten up and give those places a facelift and have some supportive ordinances. Also, an idea I've been floating out in the community that I had was to have, you know, we have a division, and a way we can come together is lean into our expertise in the arts, music, cycling types community. Use our buses to get people from one event to another event, so I say, connect people up, and that raises money for the vendors. It gives us more transient occupancy tax. It pumps up our sales tax volume. So, I'd like to do things that are those events that will support this community but also bring us all together, and I think there's a lot that can be said and done in that regard. And so, I look forward to being a part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winslow?
In the 1950s, Chico had lost our electric streetcar network, and we underwent a redesign of downtown for the automobile. One of the things that remains is this, what's in effect a six-lane highway running through downtown between Main and Broadway Street. The easiest thing that we can do to improve the vitality of downtown is to make it safe for children to bike downtown. And it's not so much a matter of moving people out of downtown. Does it not bring life in? We need to bring more people into downtown with high-density housing that's an anchor to the public transportation network, and so that there are services provided late into the night and on Sundays because a lot of people live there and get those things, so more people can be more comfortable hanging out downtown and spending their lives there. When we have lots of vacancies downtown, sometimes that's an effect of the rents being too high, and one of the things we can do to improve that is add a vacancy tax to those vacant properties so the landlord is incentivized to find a tenant at a reasonable price.
Thank you. Our next question. What will you do as a councilperson to preserve and enhance Bidwell Park for future generations? And we will begin with Ms. Kennedy.
I think something that is really important and overlooked with our parks, both Upper Park and Lower Park, is our fire preparedness. I think especially on the north side of town in Upper Park near myself, Casey's, Monica's, and Dale's districts, it's really overgrown with star thistle, dying and shedding eucalyptus. Those areas, especially Lindo Channel, are really, they're surrounded by homes, apartments. People live near our parks. They love living near our parks. We need to make it not dangerous for them to live near our parks because, in my opinion, one home lost to a preventable fire is one home too many.
Okay. Ms. Reynolds?
Yeah, I've been raised in Bidwell Park my whole life. I live a couple blocks away from it. Absolutely love the park. I'm hoping Measure H passes so we can do a lot of the cleanup and fun, the things that need to happen in Bidwell Park. We need to have our urban forester back. I think, yeah, we're super short on tree people right now, and I was going through the other day, the trees are just incredible and how much work that needs to be done. So, the keeping caper acres open as often as we can so our kids can go recreate in there, having it be a safe place where people can go and swim in one mile and not have to worry about what's coming down the flow of the river. Trees, funding, and lastly, what were we just talking about on, there was one more thing I was going to say, but I forgot?
Okay.
Sorry.
Ms. McDaniel?
Bidwell Park is one of the best parts about Chico, is the third-largest municipal park in California, one of the largest parks in the United States, and it's really something that we need to preserve. It was a gift from our city's founders, and it's something that really needs resources to help it. The difference between Upper Park and Lower Park and their needs is great because it's different kinds of habitats. We do need a new urban forester back because we have lots of overgrowth, and it's created a fire hazard in Bidwell Park. People are working to restore the native plant life and restore ecosystems in Bidwell Park, and that's really important to support, and we need to cherish that jewel and restore the plant life so that it reduces the fire hazard is a big piece of that.
Mr. Bennett?
You're going to hear this often from me. Measure H equals money, equals staffing, to work in Bidwell Park, to improve it, to make it more of what we all want it to be. Without Measure H, we're not going to be able to hire additional people, so I think that's important for you to consider. It goes right back to some of the other comments I made. We need funding. Nothing's going to change without funding. It just doesn't work that way in our world. So, Bidwell Park is beautiful. It needs a lot of work, and I think if we have enough funding, I know if we have enough funding, we'll be able to make improvements, but without the funding, we're just talking about it. It's not going to happen, folks, so you need to understand that.
Mr. Winslow?
I would love to talk about goats and ecological restoration, but I agree with Mr. Bennett that the core issue with preserving and improving Bidwell Park is funding. Measure H, however, will not even afford to fix our roads. We need is a more progressive approach to increasing the tax base, is improving property values across the city, and that means encouraging more housing and more development, more mixed-use development, and more walkable communities where we have less infrastructural sprawl, less liabilities for the city to maintain, and that's the sort of thing that's going to get us the money to where we can see an improvement of Bidwell Park. Also, improving the bicycle network so that more people are able to access Bidwell Park from their houses so it's more available to more people without having to invent new parking lots around our park.
Ms. Navas?
Yes, so, I think it's a complex thing to say, but I love Chico. A lot of the problems that need to be addressed are the dated infrastructure, the staff. We have three park rangers that have to take care of Upper, Lower Park, the channels, and the city parks that are not managed by card. We have, those three folks have to get around to almost 6,000 acres. We have the Stormwater Resource Board where we have funding that we can address erosion and other vegetation issues, so I encourage that we continue down that path, some of the things that Mr. Bennett said as well, and yes, quite frankly, without that measure passing, that's a lot of money lost. That's $24 million that will be generated. That's 24 million that will be generated annually if people support that. I know it's a heavy lift and I know it's hard with inflation, but I think we all need to dig in and look at Chico. Bidwell Park is our treasure. It's blessedly my front yard and it's how, took a, taken a beating, a lot of micro trash, so maybe some work groups. Thank you.
Mr. Van Overbeek.
So, Bidwell Park is one of the things that defines Chico. And I don't know, any of you seen the 1939 movie with Earl Flynn, Robin Hood? It was filmed in the park. And that park is, I mean, whenever anybody comes to town, the first place you take them when they want to see Chico is One Mile, right? Because that is such a fantastic thing. So, starting in April of 2020, they, there was, homeless people were allowed to camp there in the park. The lower part of the park in particular was completely trashed. So, the city's done a good job of moving the people, the campers out and into shelters for the most part. And the park is coming back, but it desperately needs attention. There's, there's, there's a fire problem because the weeds aren't being abated. We have wild grapevines that are choking the trees. There's a laundry list of things that need to be done and that needs to be at the top of our priorities when we pass Measure H.
Ms. Gianola.
I think it's a consensus that our, our parks are something to be protected and valued. I, too, my family, we love taking walks and riding our bikes in Bidwell Park from Five Mile down to One Mile. And I would like to see a return to our parks being more park-like instead of living sustainability sites for people who, who have not had a housing to live in. I'm probably going to sound like a broken record tonight when I reference affordable housing as being a means to solving many of our issues that we have here in Chico. Chico has not been able to put forth the effort that's needed for the enough and adequate amount of those affordable housing units, specifically income-based units, that would get people out of our parks because I believe that people do not belong living in them. And, and it does, I've participated in cleanups. It's hard work out there and there are dangers out there and there's dangers I do not want my children to be near or myself or my pets. And, and to solve that, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. What is your position on Measure L, which will hold the city of Chico to the same public nuisance standards as private property owners? How do you see Measure L affecting Chico in the near future? Our first person to answer will be Mr. Bennett.
Measure, Measure L is a good policy, procedure, game plan. I see no reason not to support it. I think it will help clarify the values associated with quality of life. Sometimes that's fuzzy. Sometimes it's not well-defined. So, that will help. But it is not, it's not going to make a huge difference, I don't think. We've got quite a few rules and regulations within the existing code relative to unsightly conditions. So, it's there. I would like to see us visit city, visit the existing codes, perhaps modify them, improve them and make them more workable.
Ms. McDaniel.
I am not in favor of Measure L. I think that it will strain the city. I think it'll strain the, the already overtaxed city staff. I think that quality of life is people and I think that the people of Chico have a better idea to, to support their quality of life than trying to bring it into law. I believe that if we have opportunity for people to do events and festivals, that people want to come out, that people will participate in events and festivals and participate in the quality of life that's already, that's already makes Chico great. I also believe that their housing, good housing, is also public safety. And so, if you have homeownership, you have people vested in their, in their land, you have people vested in the city, you have taxpayers and you have people who are interested in keeping the quality of life up as opposed to legislating it into law.
Ms. Navas.
Thank you. So, for the quality of life issue, I really think something like this would be important. But I also think that with certain people sitting on council, it might become a moot point. There is room in the settlement agreement to go ahead and clean up litter. You just cannot move humans or their personal belongings. And I'm very encouraged that there are people getting connected to services. I'd like to see that path continue and have some innovative ways to encourage people who have been previously service-resistant to seek assistance. But I feel like the people of Chico want to be validated and they're seeing a lot of trash on the bike paths in the parks and other places. And if this gives them an avenue for to feel that validation and be able to pursue action for protection of our public spaces, then I believe that they should be able to vote and have a voice and decide if that's what they would like to do. I do believe that with this one, they took out some of the issues that people seem to struggle with on it, so it should work out.
Mr. Winslow.
Measure L is not nearly as bad as it was when it was originally proposed. It doesn't promise to solve any of our problems. We have a court-ordered process for abating the nuisances that are referred to. And we don't need another layer of bureaucracy on, on top of these, these issues. It doesn't, doesn't promise anything. It will cost the city money. We will have people complaining more to the city, which I'm sure city staff is not happy about. And I think we have much better things to do and there are ways that we can actually address the issues of people camping in parks and of trash piling up with trash service and places for people to go that aren't in the parks.
Ms. Gianola.
Thank you. With Measure L, the public nuisance policy, I'm not in favor of the measure itself. I appreciate the ideals behind it in wanting to have a clean, safe city to live in. However, I feel like we do already have policies in place that would help address concerns that the community would have. And any policy change that we do have should be more effective policy change. For instance, zoning changes to allow for more housing to be built within the city where we have a lot of single-family zoning existing. We need to have multifamily zoning so that would increase our housing resources that we have here that would address these major concerns that we see with public nuisance. Because trash on the ground and our sidewalks and our bike paths, it is not nice to see. It's not nice to clean up. And I would agree that we do need to have that cleaned up, but we need to take other measures to address those other than just create a public nuisance policy.
Thank you. Mr. Van Overbeek.
So, the idea of having the city have to adhere to the same nuisance standards as private property owners is frankly a good idea. But the way this is written currently, nothing will change. I've discussed it with the senior city staff, a number of people. And the city has enough outs that the governing documents going to be the settlement agreement. So, I don't think it matters.
Ms. Kennedy.
I think everybody should be extremely wary of voting for something that our city attorney deemed unlawful and unconstitutional. I think this is a recipe for us to get in more lawsuits. I think it has the potential to pit business owners against one another. And we're all sitting up here tonight talking about how short-staffed our city is and how we need more Public Works employees and park rangers. Who is going to follow up with these complaints? We don't currently have the staff available for that. So, I definitely oppose Measure L.
Ms. Reynolds.
So, everything that we've been talking about tonight is all about quality of life. And this initiative is a way for, to ensure that the quality of life is the same for the city. City has got to be the same as the citizens. It is not right that the city does not have to answer too. We have code enforcement officers. There'll be a formal process for people to make a complaint, to have things addressed. And we're going to have a great committee that's going to work through Internal Affairs that will be able to address individual items that come up, thoroughly discuss them, come up with ideas and make recommendations back to the council. There's a lot of people that would like to get involved and do things so that they can have more than three minutes standing behind the podium. And this is somewhere where you can come and get involved in that committee and make changes in your community and be part of that committee. So, I invite, if this passes, I hope to see lots of you down there having great spirited debates on where we can take the city of Chico.
Thank you. And Ms. Reynolds, again, what is the biggest challenge facing your district that you hope to fix?
Biggest challenge facing District Two right now is roads and access to our bike path. So, I'm hoping that we can, in a very quick manner, get people assessed, have them, have their opportunity to be able to take that next step to furthering their lives and not having to live in our public spaces and having a safe path of travel for students, for recreators and everybody that want to use our bike paths.
Ms. Kennedy.
I think probably the biggest problem that we are facing in District Two is the same citywide and that is the housing crisis that we're in. We have currently very little affordable housing available. District Two has some of the most affordable real estate in all of Chico, but that fluctuates. Like, we have a vast majority of our mobile home parks are in District Two for the whole city. And the space rents for those are very, very unstable. Our seniors are not going to be able to afford to live there anymore. I also think that with more affordable housing, we would be able to get out of the other issue that I've spoke about, which is fire preparedness. Right now, we have people living in the Linto Channel in District Two that should not be having to live in a channel. They should be living in a home.
Mr. Van Overbeek.
Well, the biggest challenge in, in District Six and I think every other district is the fact that we have homeless people camped in our public spaces, which is crashing the quality of life for people in this town. And what we know after decades of watching this is that when you have people camped in our public spaces, it's awful for the city. You know, kids can't ride their bikes to school because homeless people are camped on the bike trail. But it's also terrible for the homeless people. They die at five times the rate of the general population. And, and that's just unacceptable. The second issue in my district is fire because District Six is the Wildland Interface on the east side of town. And so, the fact that we have a fire department that has only two-thirds the number of firefighters that we had 15 years ago is not acceptable. Thank you.
Ms. Gianola.
Thank you. In District Six, I'll agree that fire is going to be one of our main concerns over in District Six. We have the site of the Valley's Edge Development that's the size of Orland that is sitting where we traditionally use as a backburn. And that's our defensible space for Chico. And if we have these high-end homes that are placed right there, the homes at that eastern, southern end of Chico are immediately at risk of being destroyed, just like the city of Paradise and beyond with the campfire. So, affordable housing is going to be one of our big issues too. Things like the Valley's Edge is going to be built and serve people from outside of Chico. It does not satisfy the housing needs of Chico in any way. The price per property is well above our average income here in Chico. And inviting people in from out of the city, yes, will help the city budget, but will not solve our housing needs. So, housing and fire prevention are major concerns.
Mr. Winslow.
The biggest issue facing the whole of Chico is the shortage of housing. But for the, for District Four in particular, like the whole of the core of the city, we have some of the highest density housing in the city, but some of the most lackluster and deteriorating infrastructure. Not only are the sidewalks falling apart, there are no sidewalks in the highest density areas in our city. By no coincidence, we have the old Machu Picchu Rancheria next to the railroad tracks and the highway containing the highest density housing in our city. And because we haven't had district elections, these people have not been a strong enough voting block to influence the decisions of the city council. So, we have no policy for distributing equitably the funds that the city has for infrastructural improvement. Now, this neighborhood west of Warner that I live next to, this would be the opportunity for them finally to have a voice and have somebody stand up and insist that we do treat them with the respect they deserve. But the district lines cut them right in half down First Avenue, but I will still fight on behalf of all the people living in these high-density neglected areas.
Ms. Navas.
Yes, I've been knocking on a lot of doors in District Four and no matter if people identify as red, blue, purple, whatever, the roads are the biggest issue, closely followed by sidewalks and lighting. There are a lot of students there. A lot of the people relayed to me that they felt unsafe using the bike paths. They're either obstructed because of encampments or a lot of litter or too dark. They did note there had been some improvements more recently over near the tracks. The sidewalks, as Addison pointed out, are quite broken up and missing things. And if you have been looking at what the reports are saying out of the city, it will take $500 million to get our streets up to a serviceable level. And we need to start addressing that. We are really failing at our infrastructure being where it needs to be. Affordable housing, people were encouraged in District Four by the accessory dwelling units that are coming up, but they want to make sure it's mindful growth and not in every single plot of land. Thank you.
Ms. McDaniel.
The biggest issue in District Three is the Rio Linto Channel. It is overgrown, severely overgrown. The ecosystem has suffered greatly. Water used to flow through there. It is, it is a flood overflow, but water used to flow through there regularly. Animals used to live there. And the overgrowth of trees creates a huge fire hazard. In addition to the overgrowth of trees, there's people living in the channel. And the people who live in the channel, the fire department tells me that if there were a fire to get, to go through there, that they can't even get down there because there's so much trash underneath all of the overgrowth. And so, there's, that becomes a huge problem. The other problem in District Three is the infrastructure. We need to support our roads, to support our sidewalks and also to, to add lighting to this area in the Linto Channel that has become so dangerous to, to give it more safety.
Mr. Bennett.
I'll start with roads. The road in front of the house I grew up in, in District, the road that, in front of the house that I grew up in is in the same condition it was 40 years ago and is much worse. So, roads is number one. There are a lot of older roads in District Three that really need a lot of work. More, they need to be rebuilt. Number two, what is now called Lindle Channel was Sandy Gulch when I was growing up. And it was cleared out. It would regularly, the, I think it was Department of Forestry went down through there and cleared it out and that stopped many years ago, I believe, due to environmental concerns. I visited Linto Channel last week. It was not a pleasant experience due to the aggressive folks that have camped out in there and decided that Linda, portions of Linto Channel are their home. It was very disturbing.
Thank you. Our next question. What do you believe the city should do, if anything, for its homeless beyond the settlement agreement? And we will begin with Ms. Gianola.
Thank you. As someone that has gone to school for public health and understanding community needs, I know that many aspects are connected. So, housing, when you have housing that is affordable for people in a community, they're going to have, their brain set is going to be completely different. They're out of trauma mode. Any issues that we're wanting them to have support in, whether it's mental health issues, it's addiction, it is job training, any of those will be, they'll be able to focus on those once they have safe housing. And the city of Chico has put a lot of effort towards our mid and high-end housing builds over the past few decades. And that's why we're seeing the result we're seeing today is we've had catastrophes happen on top of financial catastrophes and people are now ending up in our streets. And to resolve that, we have to have housing. We need to look for grants, incentives for development, anything and everything that we can to ensure we have enough housing for the people in our area.
Thank you. Mr. Van Overbeek.
So, the settlement agreement, for the very first time in decades, we actually have a way to address the homeless situation because we have shelters for them to go to. And I'm, I'm a person that believes if you're going to, you can't have people camped in the public spaces, but you also have, there has to be a place for them to go to. So, right now, we have the Pallet Shelter, the Tourist Shelter, and there's a campground at Eaton and Cohasset. And, and we may need another campground. So, we need to make sure they have a place to go. Housing is a completely other question. So, taking somebody out of a tent who can't maintain a campground and putting them in housing is not an answer. There needs to be a transitional period. But certainly affordable housing is something we need to do. And I want to point out that this council, while this council's been seated, there have been 937 new affordable housing units approved, starting from a base of 1537. So, it's increased by two-thirds under this council.
Mr. Bennett.
And I'm going to follow up with Mr. Van Overbeck. There is actually 1,300 affordable housing units either approved under construction, in the building department, plan review permitting, or being planned. in the building department, plan review permitting, or being planned. So, there, and there's currently 900, I think it's a little different number, but I'm going to stay with the 1,300. Affordable housing is on the way. It's, we're in good shape with affordable housing. Is it ever going to be enough? Probably not. To transition somebody who's homeless from their current situation into a house, I'm not sure how you can do that. I think there's an intermediary step, which should be explored. So, it's something we need to work on, continue to work on. Affordable housing is so critically important.
Ms. McDaniel?
So, with the success of the Pallet Shelter and greater use of the Torres Shelter, people who have chosen not to utilize those services have sought refuge in other parts of the city, such as in Sandy Gulch or Rio Lindo Channel. There are, I see new tents pop up there every day, and so you have to ask yourself, why aren't they using the services that the city is currently providing? And we have to consider what's going on for them. Butte County is doing a lot. Butte County just got more vouchers to provide housing. Butte County has mental health services available that they can support Chico with. Homelessness is not just a Chico problem. It's a county and state problem, and there are resources that Chico can collaborate with to solve this problem. Considerations of mental health support services and substantive services are really important, along with hygiene.
Mr. Winslow?
Ultimately, the solution to homelessness is more housing, and the best thing that the city can do to help with homelessness is to treat housing as a crisis and adopt policies to promote more housing. Now, we have a lot of affordable housing coming in as a result of state and federal government subsidies, and we have a lot of this housing going in on Highway 32, leaving town, and that's not what we should be doing as a community. That's not fair to those people living there. This housing should be going into walkable places where people can live independent of a car. In the interim, as long as we have unmanaged and unregulated camping going on throughout Chico, we need more managed and regulated camping situations to be provided by the city.
Ms. Nava?
Okay, so, the elephant in the room to me is that this is a very complex issue. These are individuals with varied needs. We have a very high ACEs score in Butte County, which basically is adverse childhood experiences. We have two and a half times the overdoses in Butte County than we do in all of California. So, we, what we have is we have a drug crisis, and we have a mental health untreated crisis, excuse me. And so, what I'd like to do is prop up those services for folks, and there is a need, of course, for housing to be addressed as well. I know I've walked the walk to encourage this community to address our legislature and amend some laws that would help our behavioral health department, and also bring drug services, a sobering center, and other things that will help so people won't blow out of their housing. That's going to be important. I believe that there are 100 more beds that are coming online in summer of 2023 at the Jesus Center, and there also are 20 with Everheart Village that now is apparently in January. Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
So, I think the question was, what should the city do? And at this point, the city's done a lot, so I think we need to assess the situation, and we need to see where we're going to be in a year before we go out and do a whole lot more, and we need to see what it's going to cost to continue to maintain doing what we're doing. We do have about 1,263-ish units coming, of which 263 of them, I believe, are coming into District Two. We also should prioritize the people that are in the Pallet Shelter that are accepting the services, who are changing their lives and making different choices, to be some of the first ones to get those, so we can continue to move through and have people who are living in the public spaces be able to be the next on the list for the Pallet Shelters and so on. So, we're seeing lives being changed in there. It's been a great asset to the community, but we still have beds available every night at Torres and every night in the Pallet Shelter. So, until we know exactly where we're going to be and what the needs are, I think we just need to maintain and continue what we're doing right now.
Ms. Kennedy?
I think a really good place for the city to start is not to violate people's constitutional rights. It's what ended up us up in court the first time. It cost our city millions of dollars. Our council members seemed to make actions that knew were going to get us in legal trouble and continued anyway, and I really think we've got ourselves in a bind. We don't even have oversight over ourselves or this whole situation for the next five years due to this council's actions. I think that it also, as a case manager, I had the experience of getting clients into the Pallet Shelter, being a very mysterious and complicated process. If people want help, it should not be that hard for them to get it. I also think we need to focus on our growing senior population. I think that that was most of my clients that I dealt with, and it's only going to become a exacerbated problem in the future if we don't address it.
Thank you. We're going to do one more question and then closing statements, and we will have a short break, and we will proceed with the school board. So, the next question is, do you think, as a council member, that you can influence the protection of Chico groundwater? How would you do that? And we're going to Addison Winslow.
I'd like to explore all legal possibilities. We have the Tuscan Water District being implemented right now, and that's, that's giving landowners in the valley around us the ability to control the draw out of the same sub-basin of the same aquifer that we share. Chico should not be allowing that to go on without Chico having a stake in that process, and I think we ought to be exploring all legal options possible to, to give Chico a say over what happens there and stop the Tuscan Water District.
Ms. Nava?
I think there's a lot we could be doing with a lot of things in the city of Chico. I think that as far as things infecting the water with the encampments, we've had a lot of trash, toxic things happening, and those are going into our water sources. Those go downstream, and it affects our ag, it affects the riparian life, excuse me, sorry, I got watered down the wrong pipe. And so, I do believe that there are things we can do like that. We can do educational things with the community to help make sure everybody's on the same page. I think a lot of us don't understand the big picture at times, and so we do what we think is right for our household. Walking around the community, a lot of people say they don't really pay attention to local, they look at global, and that concerned me, because I said, it needs to start here, we need to care here to make that difference, and we actually put money toward doing lab tests to check our water quality and other things, and it was very disappointing results, and so we adjusted some policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gianola?
Thank you. Our groundwater is actually one of my big concerns for Chico. Across California, we have extreme droughts where people's wells are going dry, and right here in Chico, that's happening as well. My mother-in-law lives in the avenues, and she's on a well, and she's been pulling up sediment and not able to flush her toilet because of how low her well has gotten on her property. So, I do have concerns when it comes to development. Where are we developing? Are we developing on a water recharge area? Are we taking our groundwater and making private lakes out of that groundwater? How much of our water is going to our ag? And what is the regulation on that? As far as I know, regulation, the monitoring is, it happens after the fact, a full year after the fact of groundwater being pulled, then there's an assessment made and go, oops, you took too much water, but there went our water. So, I believe that there should be better control over how our water is distributed and ensuring that people of our, of our city have enough water for their, their own living and their properties. So, yeah, those are my big ones with the groundwater, is protecting it.
Mr. Van Overbeek?
So, two comments on water. One is 50% of our water use goes for environmental reasons, and then so those are things like releases into the river in order to manage salinity farther downstream and preserve a salmon run, that kind of thing. 40% goes to ag, this is in California overall, and only 10% goes to residential use. So, we have plenty of water for residential uses, but we need to be careful, something else is going to have to give, obviously, when we're in a drought period. The main thing we can do to influence the quality of groundwater is to make sure that our streams aren't polluted, because we let people camp on them and do the things that they do without benefit of proper facilities and pollute our streams. I live right near Little Chico Creek, and it's, it was pretty awful. It's much better, it's been cleaned up, much better now.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think we need to start getting creative and really looking at where our water's going. Right now, we're, we're processing it and sending it all down the Sacramento River. I think it's time to modernize our facility and actually store some of that water and use it for what we have. We need to look at things like biochar that could be filled back and put on our, back on the ground, that could make our trees and everything, our yards, everything, use 30% less water. So, I think it's time to absolutely protect the groundwater, make sure that we have what we need, and move into the 20th century and start doing some of the things other cities are doing, and getting really creative in using their water.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy?
I agree with a lot of what Ms. Reynolds just said. I feel like every single person in this room should be paying a lot more attention than we are to the privatization of our water. We have already been in extreme periods of drought, which just exacerbates our fire conditions, and it is also particularly terrifying to think that we could be entering an era of people who become water barons. People should not have the right to sell something as vital as water and make themselves millionaires off of it, and I really think we should look into how we can protect ourselves legally in that area, and also modernize our city so that we can conserve water and use what we have wisely.
Mr. Bennett?
The thought of turning on a faucet and there is no water, or the water is not pure, it's a different color, is pretty frightening. So, any effort, and I don't know what the city of Chico could do about it, it's just too big of an issue, but any effort to conserve water, use the water more wisely, any idea, any effort, I think, is worthwhile and beneficial. But to ask the city of Chico, and I'm going to say, to ask the city council to try and get involved in the water situation, I just don't see that happening. I don't know how it could happen. We can encourage, and I think we, we should encourage, wiser use of the water that we do have, and I do support the Tuscan Water motion. So, that's it.
Ms. McDaniel?
So, we, as Californians, know that drought is cyclical. It comes, it goes. We see long droughts. We're seeing longer droughts happening, and what's going on with the Tuscan Water District and with the county is terrifying to me. The idea of privatization of water rights is scary, and it should be scary to all of you, because water is such a valuable, precious resource. If we, if, if we allow it to be privatized and let people control our water rights, then we're in for a dim future, and so I would fight for, to support water rights.
Thank you. Before we begin closing statements, I want to say thank you to everyone who submitted a question. I apologize that we can't get to each question, and there are really some questions that I wish we could talk more about. To all the voters, go to the League of Women Voters, Voters Edge website, and you can pursue your candidate or contact them. So, we're going to move to closing statements for one minute, and the first one is Ms. Nava.
Okay, well, first, thank you for your time tonight. Thank you to the League of Women's Voters for having us. I, what I would do for you is, I'm a heck of a multitasker. I like to listen to people's ideas. I like to analyze data. I would love to throw up some public dashboards, because I feel like we've been craving information and felt like we're a little bit in the dark, so I think it's great to have those data outputs and embrace best practices that other cities are doing. I think with the affordable housing issue, there's a lot we can do there in the space we have as a city, like maybe relaunch the first-time homebuyers program, take a look at what we can do subsidy-wise, pulling down a lot of funding that's available from the state for fixed-income seniors and vets, look at our unhoused, do an assessment to kind of map to the amount of folks left out there, to make sure we have enough beds, and then encourage them in innovative ways to seek connection to services, like non-traditional hours, maybe work by the county, so that takes collaboration with the county. Can we do tours of the Pallet Shelter and the Torres Shelter for folks to demystify it? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winslow?
I'm a working-class renter in a majority working-class renter city. That's not reflected in our political leadership, and I don't really expect that it is going to be. But one thing I want to make very clear for everybody to understand is that Morgan, Monica, Jessica and I, we're never going to raise as much money as the other people up here. We don't have the same scale of real estate developer or landlord support, and when I walk up to a house and I ask them, did you put that sign outside? And they say, no, my landlord did. It's kind of embarrassing. I want you to know that we're all being manipulated. What I would like to ask, because we're here supporting the sustainable, the goals of a sustainable community that we have in our general plan, to help us overcome the barrier that we have, being less well-funded in these campaigns, that we need grassroots support, and that's what we're running on, so, thanks.
Mr. Van Overbeek?
So, there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing, and one of the things we haven't talked about is CHAT, which is, my opponent, Ms. Gianola, is a case manager for CHAT, and CHAT has housed, do we think 400 people?
A hundred.
Yeah, it's 77 houses, around 400 people. It's all been privately funded, and that's in addition to the affordable housing that the city and the state has been responsible for. So, what we've allowed to have happen in this city is a half percent of the population to define civic life for the rest of us. So, you have a clear choice in this election. You can elect candidates like me, whose paramount concern is the quality of life for all Chico citizens, or you can elect people who will allow camping in our parks and creeks and downtown and all the chaos that ensues from that. Chico's been suffering from years of decline in civic life. It is not inevitable, and we can fix it.
Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Kennedy, sorry. Let's hold our applause, please. Ms. Kennedy?
Can you repeat the question, or this is closing?
This is your closing statement.
I'm so sorry, that was distracting. Anyway, I would implore you to vote for me, because I feel like Chico is really at a precipice right now. I feel like we can either continue to go down the road of doom and gloom, and it's horrible to live here, and there's crime everywhere, and there's trash everywhere, and we're going to get sued every five seconds, or we can really take a modern approach to our city and really get it going on the path to make it a destination for all of the North State. We could improve upon the wonderful things that already make us unique. I don't think we can do that with current leadership, and I really hope that if you're in my district, you choose the path of a brighter, more exciting future and vote for me. Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you so much to the League for having us here today. This has been a very spirited and fun event. I would just like to ask that you all really look at who you are, where you came from, how you came here, and what you want for the future of Chico. I've been born and raised here, I've run my business here, I raised my family here, and I am downtown every day. I'm talking with business owners every day, talking with community members every day, and there are serious concerns and things that need to be taken care of, so we need people with experienced leadership who have their boots on the ground, who know what's happening in their community and want to continue to fight for it. I have strong union backing, I've got PD Fire and the Teamsters who've all endorsed my campaign, and I would love to have another four years to not be fighting through fires, floods, and COVID, so we can get some amazing, work together and get some amazing things done for our city. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
I have a great deal of experience, I've talked about that somewhat. I have a great deal of integrity. I have a great deal of common sense, and I think those factors, I know those factors make a big difference in my decision-making process. I think Chico's in a good spot. I am not, I do not support the negative comments about Chico. I think we're doing very well. I've been privileged and honored to be on the city council with Vice Mayor Reynolds. It's been a fascinating experience, and I would ask for your support to continue my efforts to make Chico what we all want it to be, what we all expect it to be, and most importantly, what it can be. But it takes the leadership to move it forward, it takes a leadership that is truly engaged in all of the effects. It's a very complex situation, so please vote for me. I appreciate that, and I do want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters.
Ms. McDaniel?
So, we talked about tonight that Chico needs more money, more revenue, more revenue for our roads. We talked about Measure H. We can pass Measure H, and it's still not quite enough to help support our infrastructure, to help support our parks, to help support our services, our fire department, our police department. We need to get creative, and we need to have creative avenues of funding, and looking at other cities for their best practices is a way of doing that. Oroville just had their salmon festival last weekend. They had 134 different organizations there. That brought a lot of tourism to the city, it brought a lot of money to the city, but most of all, it brought the community together, and Chico needs to look at other cities for their best practices to help grow. And Chico needs to look at other cities for their best practices to help grow our community and to grow our funding mechanisms. But County, the top two industries are hospitality and restaurants, and we need to support that quality of life that Chico has and that we can use to help us flourish financially. I do have a history of leadership, and I hope you vote for me for District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gianola.
Thank you, everyone. What I see is that we are a community of very common concerns when it comes down to it, and where we'll differ is our approach and how we think we can resolve them. And we can clearly see that what has been done, what's currently being done, is not really working. As I would consider having people without homes being moved from our neighborhood to neighborhoods, that's not really solving anything in the end. As someone who lived unhoused myself, I lived in tents and vehicles my childhood, and I lived in safe housing as a single mom. I know personally how difficult it is to overcome the barriers, and we have many of them, to obtain housing in an area. And I'm also on the research board, a statewide research board for the causation of homelessness. So as homelessness is a big issue in our city, I feel that I am appropriate to be on the city council in helping guide our city to answers instead of just direction of into another neighborhood, but how do we actually help bring housing to Chico?
Thank you. And to all our candidates, we thank you. We thank you for running for office and being willing to serve all of us.[1793.97][1793.97]